All right, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and start. Be quiet. All right, good evening. We're gonna get started. So, welcome. Stop talking. All right, welcome to the October 27, 2025 RTM regular meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ken Astorita, Peter Britton, Melissa Longo, Brooke Sparachino, Tara Cook-Lipman, Megan McCloth, Dave Rock, Chris Shea, Bob Elwinger, Mike Cardigan, Jeff Steele, Cindy Waldron, Jen Hawuth, Laura Carson, Michelle McCabe, Liz Esma, Josh Garskoff, Kristen O'Neill, Sharon Pastili, Jay Wolk, Rob Blanchard, Nancy Donnie, Eric Juniak, Alex Ocampo.
Here.
Steve Barretts, Lori Galdenzi, John Kuhn.
Here.
Scott Nickel, Lenny Bremen.
Here.
Chris Carroll, Helen Colburn, Christine Ludwazek, Drew Giorgiades, Lisa Havy, Mark McDermott, Karen Whackerman, Matt Ambrose, Justin Contrato, Margaret Horton.
Here.
Pierre Ratsky.
Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Item number two on our agenda is to consider the minutes of the joint committee meetings held on September 15, 2025, and the minutes of the regular monthly meeting held on September 29, 2025. Is there a motion to approve? Representative Carson, seconded by Representative Nickel. Any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Giorgiades is abstaining. The motion carries. Next, we have a consent calendar, the last one, for the RTM. So, the following items are eligible for a consent calendar under Rule 32 of the RTM Rules to Regulate, having received unanimous approval of each committee item, or of each committee. The items are three, four, five, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Representative McDermott, seconded by Representative Havy. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? All, oh, sorry, I should've said signify by saying aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries. Okay. Item number eight. To hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that the bond resolution entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $76,398,168 for Costs Associated with the Timothy Dwight Elementary School Replacement and Early Childhood Center Project and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." Is there a motion to approve? Representative Carroll, seconded by Representative Rock. Okay, before we continue, I'm gonna entertain a motion to make an amendment to add some language. Representative Whackerman.
Karen Whackerman, District 9. I'd like to move to amend the resolution by adding at the end the words "be" and hereby is approved.
Okay, so, on the table is, oh, is there a second? Representative Pastili? Okay. Any discussion? This is simply on the amendment to add the language "be" and hereby is approved to this item. Any comment? Okay, from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That motion carries. So now, we're gonna go back to the original amended motion. Does anybody need me to repeat it? Okay. Okay. Before we begin debate through some questions this week, it was asked for Representatives from Svagals to come and do a presentation. So, we have with us Marissa Dionne Mead from Svagals to present a little bit. I want to remind people as we get started that the purview of our body here this evening is to approve or reject the item on the table in front of us as is. This presentation will help just shed some light on how that item came to be. And so, I'm gonna ask Marissa to please come and join us, and after that, we'll have an opportunity to have our regular debate.
Right, thank you. Again, my name is Marissa Dionne Mead. I'm a principal at Svagals Plus Partners. Sorry, I just need to turn off my volume.
And is the green light on on your microphone?
It is, sorry. Can everybody hear okay? All right, great. I'm a principal at Svagals Plus Partners, an FCA company. We were contracted in April of this year to do a feasibility study for a number of properties in Fairfield, to look at school properties, as well as a couple other properties that are owned by the town at this time, to review options for not only updating the Dwight School, but also looking at locations for adding ECC classrooms, and potentially doing additional projects that could help improve some of the existing schools, renovations at existing schools. So, what I'm gonna do is just kind of run through the, the report is very long. Hopefully, you have all had a chance to look at it already, but I'll just touch on a few of the highlights, and then we can open it up to questions. So, over the course of the project, we, of course, reviewed the educational specifications which were provided to us by the Town of Fairfield. So, those are summarized here. All of our design, concept designs were based on this educational specification that was provided to us. So, this is for both the Dwight School, as well as a five-section ECC. And we also received some separate information on how to amend the ECC, if it was going to be a 10-section ECC located at alternate site. The first thing we did was we visited all of the sites, starting with Dwight. So, the Dwight site is quite interesting. It changes about 180 feet across the property in terms of elevation, so it has a kind of a challenging geography to it. There are some wetlands on the site. There's also, as you probably know, an aging septic system that needs to be replaced with any project. There were some minor structural repairs, and then also, we had heard repeated concerns about potential moisture infiltration. We know when the building was constructed, it did not have moisture barriers underneath the concrete slabs in the same way we do in construction now. And so, over time, some of that moisture can get into the building. It causes, you can smell it. There's some olfactory concerns, and, you know, over time, it can cause other issues as well. The next site that we looked at was the Jennings Elementary Property. And so, this was a site we were looking at as a potential renovation to the existing school, a standard renovation, with the addition of a five-section ECC. This site, initially, when we looked at it, it seemed fairly constrained. We weren't sure what, how much flexibility we were gonna have to put in addition on this site, especially with the traffic concerns and needing to pull more traffic and parental drives into the site. But we were able to come up with some options there, which I'll get into shortly. The third property we looked at was Mona Terrace. This is obviously an existing senior center, and there was previously a preschool located here, a child's garden. And so, we did look at options for doing either a five-section ECC in just the child's garden area, or a 10-section ECC and taking up the full existing building. This particular property is in a floodplain, and so, that makes it really tricky to look at this in doing any kind of expansive project here. Anything that passes a certain cost threshold will trigger FEMA requirements, which would necessitate raising the building out of the floodplain, which, as you can imagine, is a pretty steep expense. And so, that was a major consideration in the feasibility study. The next property was the Osborne Hill Elementary School. This was a school we were not looking at for a renovation project, but just for an addition for the five-section ECC. So, this is an alternate location for a potential five-section ECC. And then, we also looked at the Giant Steps property. This one, we did deem as a teardown. You know, we did a number of walkthroughs with our engineers, and based on the existing conditions, determined that the amount of testing and examination that would be required in order to just figure out what could stay and what could go would out-cost the rebuild. So, in this case, our recommendation was to tear this down. It's in a fair amount of disrepair and potentially dangerous, so our recommendation was to take that building down as quickly as possible. And then, the last site that we looked at was the Riverfield property. Again, we initially had been asked to consider this as a location for a five-section ECC. But this property also is in a floodplain. And as you can see, oops, I'm not even sharing my screen. Let me share this one so you can see it. I can go back to any visuals if anyone would like to see them. All right. So, in this property, you can see on the map here that most of the available area is within the floodplain. So, the actual building is not so much in the floodplain, but anywhere where we could put in addition was in the floodplain. So, after discovering this, it was determined early on in the feasibility study that we would set this property aside and just look at the remaining five properties. I'm now going to fast-forward into some of the concepts that were developed. So, the Concept 1A, yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I wanna, I think members are mostly interested in hearing about the Dwight, the proposals on Dwight.
Great, so we can focus on those and then go to questions. Great. All right, so the Dwight Concept 1A was a renovation-only, meaning no additions were considered for this particular option. I know it sounds a little bit silly, why even look at that? But in this case, what we run into in municipalities is you go through a feasibility study, and there's inevitably the question, well, what can we just do with the existing building as it is? And so, it's worthwhile to check. And so, what we found is probably not surprising that the educational specification requirements do not fit into the existing footprint. On this floor plan here, and I can zoom in, there's about 5,000 square feet off to the right-hand side here that could not be accommodated in the building at all. And then, on the floor plan here, every space with the crosshatch, the diagonal crosshatch, and the gymnasium are all undersized according to the ed spec, and some of them significantly so. So, for example, you know, a number of the classrooms are almost 200 square feet smaller, and then, the media center is about half, almost half the size that was requested in the ed spec. So, fairly early on, you know, it was, this information became available, and we moved on to the next scheme, knowing that this one, because of its lack of ability to meet the ed spec, was not really a viable option. The next concept that we looked at was Concept 1B. So, this is essentially building on that last scheme, so doing a renovation of the existing, but building in addition to capture the square footage that was missing. And so, in this plan, we're removing the existing gymnasium and the wing on the right-hand side of the page here to put in larger classrooms, a right-sized gymnasium, and then we have a single-story addition to capture the additional square footage needed to meet the Dwight program. In this particular scheme, we are not including any square footage for the ECC. So, this is Dwight only. We did. What's that? Yes, yeah. And I can, I'll go to a matrix at the end where we can compare all of them. But, so, in this, the construction cost was 48 million. And then, there are some additional, you know, soft costs and other things that are added. So, when we look at it on the chart, you'll see those additional costs at the end. Concept, yep.
So, we will have an opportunity to ask, if you could include the costs in your presentation, but certainly after the presentation, we will have our regular debate where members can, you know, pose questions and comments.
Okay. How about I quickly describe the concepts, and then we can jump to the page where all the costs are compared? That be best? Okay. We did look at a concept very similar to this. So, physically, Concept 1C is identical to Concept 1B, except here, we are renovating the existing Dwight School, and we are adding on just to accommodate the five-section ECC. So, there's still about 5,000 square feet plus missing for the Dwight School. And so, when we discovered that, this was also an option that we sort of set aside, since it's not capturing the Dwight program. It wasn't really, not a viable option. The next concept, and I'll move quickly here, Concept 1D. This is the renovate-as-new with a two-story addition that captures both the ECC program and the full Dwight program. So, in this concept, there are still a few spaces that are undersized because we're working with an existing structure. But overall, we were able to mostly meet the program. We then looked at two options for an all-new build. The first one is 1E, which is for just the Dwight School. And that is a two-story structure, essentially a two-story structure built into the side of the hill. And then, the last and final concept here is Concept 1F, which is the full Dwight program and the full five-section ECC program in a brand-new building, also built into the hill, which allowed us to take advantage of the grade change on the site. So, we get the parking at the area where the existing school building is. The new school building sort of traverses the grade change, and then there's still area for play, play fields and recreational fields at the upper level. And so, if we fast-forward all the way to the end, this is where you can see the cost comparisons. And this includes now, we have the construction cost in the first column. I can zoom in. The construction cost is in the first column, so that's what we developed with our cost estimator. We did factor in a limited number of relocation costs. So, this was a number that was provided to us by the school district based on some additional busing that would be required, sort of the net additional cost of busing for a relocation scheme. It does not include relocation costs associated with outfitting a space because since we didn't have any potential spaces, it would be too hard to understand the cost of that at this point. So, that's something to keep in mind with any scheme requiring a relocation. So, we have the construction cost, some relocation costs. The costs per square foot are listed here. And then, we did a calculation to estimate what the potential reimbursement would be for each of the concepts. And then, in the final column is the estimated minimum cost from the municipality for each of the concepts. And so, if we're just focusing on the Dwight concepts right now, that Concept 1A, again, is just a renovation, no additions. Concept 1B and 1C each have a one-story addition with renovation. Concept 1D is the full renovation with a two-story addition to accommodate all of the program. And then, Concepts 1E and 1F are the new-build options.
Thank you so much. And so, now, we'll go ahead and open our regular debate on this item. And I just wanted to give a reminder that it is, per Roberts rules, it's 10 minutes per member in our normal debate. And so, is there any discussion on this item? Oh, Representative Shea.
Hi, my name is Chris Shea. I'm a representative from District 2. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your information with us. I really appreciate it. I think it's very important that the RTM has an opportunity to evaluate this.
Representative Shea, I'm sorry, I don't know if everybody can hear you.
The green light's on, so. Okay. I wonder, I'm gonna have a bunch of questions for you. You, I don't know if you want to take them one at a time, or, but, just kind of a basic question. Did your firm provide a recommendation to our town for one of the options?
Our firm did not provide a recommendation. Our job was really to uncover as much information as we could and provide that to the working group so that a decision could be made based on that information.
Thank you. The proposal is for 1F, so I'm gonna, unfortunately, I'm gonna try and stick to the 1F questions, even though 1D is really attractive to me. The existing school is presently where the new parking area is proposed. So, you can't build that parking lot until the existing school is demolished. And so, you wouldn't be able to occupy the new school right away. You'd have to first demolish the parking lot and then make a parking lot. So, I guess, that's just, I don't know if that, if the time for that has been considered in your, in your cost and your estimating.
It is assumed that the project would require some amount of phasing, whether it was one of the renovation options or one of the new-build options. With the new build, the idea is that the new building can be built while the existing school remains in place. And then, there would be a period of time, hopefully, mostly occurring over a summer, where the existing building would be demolished, and then the parking would be put in its place.
And speaking of the timing of that, do you have an estimated time for construction? Like, for example, I know there needs to be an architectural, engineering, structural, all kinds of consulting engineers and everything engaged, and then the design produced and maybe finalized and everything, and then the bidding process. How long is it likely to take until we're ready to put a shovel in the ground?
There's a lot of factors that go into that. You know, in an ideal scenario, you would have a design process. You know, if it started tomorrow, that could take six to nine months, and then you'll have reviews and approvals with the state. And then, construction can begin, and timelines for that are around 18 to 24 months.
So, in a perfect world, it's about three years from now before construction would be completed. And that would include the demolishing of the Dwight School, the existing school, in order to do the parking lot and everything. So, the new Dwight School would be able to be occupied. So the new Dwight school would be able to be occupied, you know, Thanksgiving and three years from now? Okay. Did, did you ever consider the need to remove the occupancy of Dwight during the new school construction? Was that ever considered as a potential issue or need?
That could be considered if there is a swing space available, and it makes sense for the town to relocate students for all or a portion of the demolition. But as it was developed in the feasibility study, our anticipation was that in those particular schemes where we're building new, we have the opportunity to build while the students remain in the existing building.
It seems to me that the parking lot to the north of the school that kind of serves the food service, and it's kind of a loading dock for Dwight, and it also is an area where staff and teachers park is not going to be able to be used because it's in the way of the new construction. So I'm wondering if you, if you thought about how that might affect the existing school being occupied?
Existing school, well, so there would be probably some limited disruption to a few of the parking spots, but you know, the design was, the intention of the design is to be off of the existing used site, so that the existing school and its existing parking lots, majority of that area can continue to function as is. And construction activity will be isolated in the vehicles and everything to the upper terrace.
The, the upper terrace is only accessible by the, the main driveway that feeds the school from Reading Road, so I'm not sure how you would limit construction traffic to the upper terrace. They need to share that driveway.
Correct, they need to share the driveway.
Just ask that you speak into the mic.
Yes, so the, the drive aisle that's on the north side of the site, it may need to be widened slightly for the construction activities, but the idea is that the construction vehicles, everything would, would use that to get up to the higher terrace. But then once they're up there, the, the construction trailers, the piles of stuff, the lay-down areas, all of that would be isolated to that higher terrace.
I, I don't think that's accurate, but I'll take your word for it for now. It seems to me like there's no way to isolate the work. I mean, you're going to be cutting into that hill, which is just, which is adjacent to that parking lot I was referring to, and there's a lot of earthwork that needs to happen there, including potentially, based on the, the Borings report that I looked at, you're going to need to blast rock there to get to the elevations that you need to be at for that, that first floor level, which is basically below grade, primarily below grade. So it, it seems to me like there's going to be some conflict with the use of that parking lot for the, for the school folks. The other thing that may be not apparent, but to me, it was pretty obvious, during construction of the new school, the existing playgrounds and the basketball hoops and all that would be, would be demolished, so that children wouldn't have a playground.
Temporary play structures would need to be provided on the site, temporary recreational areas. And there, there are some paved areas around the building that can accommodate some of those activities. There's also some usable space a little bit further down the grade for the recreational activities, as well as the overflow parking, because I think you're pointing out that some of the existing spaces closest to the hill may not be usable, which is, which is probably right, will need a buffer of about 15 to 20 feet. But the remaining part of the parking lot will be accessible. There's also two lower parking lots that are not really in, in very much use during the day that can be used if some of those spaces become unavailable.
Yeah, like the, the lower parking lot by the tennis courts that I think you're referring to, yeah, those, I, I think those would be, aside from the fact that there'll be construction traffic going up and down there all day long, they're not really, they're not out of the way of the construction traffic. So there, I think there's a potential issue for safety concerns.
And Representative Shea, I just want to let you know that you're just at 10 minutes at this point.
10 minutes, 10 minutes are up?
Yeah. If you want to wrap yourself, if you want to have another follow-up question.
Okay. I just, I'm going to make a quick statement. I'd just like to say that, you know, I'm an elected RTM member who loves this town and actually has been out campaigning and knocking on doors to try and do this again for a couple of years. That's how much I love this town, and I really care very much about all of the citizens of the town. And one of my big deals is fiscal conservative values, and so I'm concerned at the cost of this proposal. And I just was really disappointed that the RTM wasn't presented any option other than 1F. And we basically have an up or down vote on 1F. And, and I, I wish that there were, there was an opportunity for us to have reviewed this in advance and maybe given some input to it before it was decided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Shea. Other discussion? Representative Britton.
Peter Britton, District 1. A couple of questions, please. First, is it, you mentioned, and having toured the school the other day, it seems like a major reason that we want to do this renovation is because the classrooms are deemed undersized, right? A piece of it, but it seems like that's a motivating factor here, right? So my question is, is that the same situation in the other schools around town? Are they more in compliant with a larger classroom setup than what Dwight is currently dealing with?
We have Superintendent Testani who can answer that question.
You know all the schools, so.
Good evening, thank you. As Marissa just mentioned, it is one component, if we're going to do a renovation, we should maximize the classroom size space that would be adequate for today's standards, but that is not one of the top reasons why we should be doing this project. Air quality is a major concern at that school. It's an aging building that is in desperate need of a replacement or significant upgrade. I mean, the town has gotten over 60 years of life out of this building. So in comparison to other buildings, yeah, we do have larger class sizes in terms of square footage at most of our buildings, not all. But as we've touched each school and as we will continue to renovate, those will be considerations as well, where possible. But it is not the driving force here is classroom sizes.
And I, and I guess a question here on the, the direct cost, 46 million, and then the construction total of 76. Did you all put these numbers together, or was it done with the Board of Ed, or how was this determined in terms of these soft costs and all these different?
So the numbers that are below the line, so we have on there the design and estimating contingency, the general conditions, bonds and insurances, construction contingency, escalation, the CM fee and the soft costs, which includes things like the design fees, permitting, FFNE, and, and other items. And so these were numbers that were developed with our cost estimator based on other similar projects and what we're seeing for those below-the-line item costs. And we did review all of these with the, with the working group and with the Board of Finance, based on what they have seen in the town. And so we, you know, we made our best attempt to right-size those numbers based on what we're seeing in the market today.
Go on record saying, it seems to me an extremely large delta here between 46. In order to do the hard costs, there's the direct costs, you know, you had to do a lot of homework, right? As you've done in this detail, in terms of every, pretty much every little element of how this building is going to get built, which I commend you, because that's really, it's great work. Seems to me to go from 46 to 76 is excessive. So that's my point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Britton. Other discussion? I think I had Representative Carroll on the list next.
Thank you very much, Chris Carroll, District 8. I just want to be on the record, I am voting for this, and I think a week ago, I was on the fence about it. I think the detail of the budget, while I know it's preliminary, is extraordinarily helpful, like 76 million dollars, where's it going? And, and starting to break it down, I'm not a construction engineer, so it is very helpful. The addition of the ECC, my son, who is now successfully in the fourth grade, traveled over 30 minutes each way to go to the ECC at three and four years old. It was brutal. This is, this is a great recommendation. Superintendent, I asked you earlier this week to get enrollment information because I was curious, were we going to outgrow any of our schools? And, and my takeaway, but I'm not a professional at this, is that's not going to be an issue in any of the upcoming schools. We're not hitting a population growth that's going to cause us to have to renovate a school for any reason?
Well, we are seeing overcrowding beginning at McKinley. Osborne Hill is pretty much full. I do have some concerns for Riverfield as more students are moving into that district. We've gotten a couple of students that have registered since school has started, and we anticipate the possibility of another being added to a grade this week, which could trigger the possibility of a new section, which we do not have an open classroom there as well. So there are some concerns, depending on where the enrollment is and in what grade levels, that it could trigger the need for more classrooms across the district and certain schools.
Okay, thanks. So that, that leads me to my question. Over the next three to five years, do you anticipate coming to the Board of Education, coming to the Board of Selectmen, Finance, and the RTM requesting either a renovation of a school or build out of a new school?
Yes. Jennings.
You know when that is?
Well, it's on our capital plan to come before all the town bodies, and yes, I believe it's 2028, correct? Yes, 20, I was going to say 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Representative Ludwig Zach.
Christine Ludwig Zach, District 8. Thank you for your presentation. I believe I have a few concerns I just want to address. First of all, very much in favor of making a change with Dwight, whether it's a rebuild or a new building. I think we definitely need to do something in the immediate future, so looking forward to breaking ground in 2026, absolutely. My first question, I think, was pretty much addressed with Representative Carroll there as well, but I would want to follow up with it with, I guess, Superintendent Testani here. So I did review the Board of Ed's projections, their 10-year growth plan. So you do have, it looks like, current enrollment for students this year, 9,063. 10-year, 2035 would be 9,449. My main first thought when I did touch base with a few local teachers, and I got the same question from them, addressing the needs of overcrowding throughout the elementary schools, I guess is, how come we're not building Dwight as a new build for more than the current population of 240 students?
Well, we are building the school a little bit larger. We plan on relocating some classes that are currently at Mill Hill, which will alleviate some of the issues that we have there. And then from there, we do have the possibility, and it would be the Board's decision, the Board of Education, if they wanted to redistrict any students, but currently, that has not been discussed. But the building as a new build with ECC does afford us a little bit larger of space with the possibility of relocating some specialized programs that would alleviate and open up space at other buildings.
I think I might have misread that then or misunderstood it, but I, I thought that I saw it was for 238 students or 240 max. Is there, did I misunderstand that? What the rebuild, it would be, the new building would be accommodating, 240 students?
I can actually pull up the.
And we have BOE Chair Peterson as well to answer.
It's the Dwight population of 240 students plus the CLC classrooms, which total 24 students. Those are the ones Mr. Testani said are going to be relocated, and then 128 for the ECC. So 392 total.
So again, I do think the ECC is completely separate than the 240 students, so that 120, those 128 students definitely need a space, and you know, this is a great accommodation and a great opportunity for it. However, that does not take into consideration the 400-some-odd students that will be projected to attend our schools, correct?
Well, it all depends where the students live in those projections. So by moving the ECC out of Stratfield, we're also alleviating five classrooms that are currently being occupied there. We also have the flexibility, if we don't have to move all five out of Stratfield, we can move the two that we currently have occupying two classrooms at Holland Hill. So it does give us a lot of flexibility, even with the increased enrollment. And as we all know, the enrollment at middle and high schools are absorbed into the existing footprint and the existing classes. We've talked about this a couple of times at Budget Time. Having an increase at the secondary level doesn't really cause us to increase our costs or how we operate in the footprint of the building.
Okay, thank you. I think that does give me a lot of insight, knowing that the ECC would absorb some of the other population in the other elementary school set, that would open opportunities for those districts, because the study does specify in the beginning, in the executive summary, that they are looking to accommodate for the overcrowding throughout all districts in town. And I think wanting to make sure that this is the best for Dwight, the best for ECC, but also the best for all of Fairfield, just wanted to make sure that that was kind of a consideration for the other overcrowding components in the elementary schools. Two more questions, please. Let's see, four considerations. In case, I think there was some concerns from other parties, Representative Shea, who's in the building industry and has a lot of background on this, you know, had mentioned that it's possible that maybe they might, students might not be able to stay in the facility while the new facility is being built. Was the consideration given or the cost associated with portables on-site?
We quickly eliminated that from consideration, given the extreme costs and the short-term usage from those, those structures. So a portable costs around $600,000 each. As you can imagine, we have 12 sections up there, so that's 12 portables. And then the access to cafeteria, gymnasium, lavatories and everything else, plus all the infrastructure it would cost to get power and electricity, cabling, networking, it just, it wouldn't be feasible or a worthwhile investment.
Thank you. Last question regarding the ECC designated sections. I know that we have five sections in this proposal. Was it a consideration, or if we were to, it's my understanding that the grant would still be feasible if we had two ECC units, that we would still qualify for that grant reimbursement? Is it possible, or would we consider allocating two units for ECC and having three units or three sections more flexible for additional students over the next decade as needed? Given that once they are designated ECC with this grant, they do need to remain, I believe, for 10 years with that kind of recognition?
Well, we really would like to relocate five classes because we need the space. And if the trend, which we anticipate happening to a universal preschool, becomes reality sooner than later, we're going to need the space for ECC regardless. So we really need that space for ECC. And then when we get to the Jennings project in a couple of years, it'll also be a topic at that time with the Board on whether we need expansion of ECC at Jennings and what that will look like based on where we are in the early childhood statewide.
Okay. Thank you very much. I came in this evening with a lot of questions and a lot of uncertainties. And I feel like, again, I just wanted to make sure this was not only best for Dwight and ECC, but also best for the whole of Fairfield absorbing this, you know, significantly large cost. So thank you for speaking to all of those. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe I have Representative O'Neal next.
Kristin O'Neal, District Five. I don't actually have any questions. I just wanted to state that I am an enthusiastic supporter of this project. It is something that has been discussed here and amongst the other town boards for many, many years. And I just wanted to say that as public officials, we often talk about being proactive in our decision-making and funding education, and I think this is the time to do just that. We all know that the longer we wait on this, the more expensive it will end up being. There are, there are many districts applying for this reimbursement when we look at Scenario 1F and adding the ECC space to Dwight. The state reimbursement is obviously very attractive. However, there are many, many districts in Connecticut applying for those funds, and they will not last forever. So it really is imperative that we move on this as quickly as possible. Also, something that Superintendent Testani just mentioned, when we wait on these projects, other school projects are also waiting. For instance, my kids go to Jennings. Jennings has been pushed because Dwight is in more significant need of repairs, but their repairs are getting more costly every moment we wait on this as well, and they still do not have air conditioning. I realize that $76 million is a huge cost to the town, but it is also a collective cost every time we push this back. And a new Dwight and a new ECC will benefit the entire town. As we were saying before, there's overcrowding in other schools, and this extra space will allow for potential shifts with our other elementary populations. The other thing, ECC classrooms really will prioritize the children in our town who need special education services, and it will be a draw when young homebuyers are looking at Fairfield, and there are more options for public preschool. So again, I just want to say I am an enthusiastic supporter of this, and it will be a benefit to Fairfield as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Representative Astorita.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Can I ask Astorita, District One, a couple of questions? And I'm not sure who can answer this one. Do we know, do we know what the cost of the financing of what I assume will be a 20-year bond on this project is going to be? Anybody?
I know that our Finance Director, I afforded some information from him earlier today to the body. I believe that was about the debt service costs. I don't know if that answers-
If, if that was, was that in there? I didn't have a chance to see that. Do we know what that number is?
Yeah, let me just make sure.
I heard $29 million. Mom, will that spot?
CFO Harris.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Jeff Peterson, Board of Ed Chair. This, this came from Tom Harris earlier today. It is assumed that the project's cost, about $75 million, will be bonded during three bonding cycles fiscal year '26 through '28. Based on the project's estimated funding requirements, debt service costs are estimated at $29,413,295.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so that basically brings this project to, in excess of $100 million. Second question, and thank you for your presentation, by the way. How comfortable are you that we will get the reimbursements in all the models that you've gone through here?
Well, on the project that's before you, we were 100% confident on the new build. When you start doing the renos, when the audit comes up at the end of the project, they will disqualify certain components of the project at that time. So we'll really have no understanding of that until way later down the road. But on a new build, we're 100% confident on the reimbursements at this time. If we wait, it was mentioned by Mrs. O'Neal that this could change as every district in the state is lining up for the funding, and that money's going to dry up similar to the indoor air quality money that dried up after COVID.
So is that, is that your opinion as well in terms of reimbursement costs on renovations? Yeah?
Yeah. As Superintendent Testani said, there is more gray area with the renovations, and so there's a little less confidence there on the reimbursement. In the chart with the costs that's at the back of this report, what is included there is an estimated maximum reimbursement, right? So there are, through the process, generally, some things come up that aren't reimbursable, which ticks the number down. We can try to adjust based on what has historically happened in Fairfield with some of your other projects. So we can look to some of those to understand how has the reimbursement rate been impacted on other school projects. But what's in there is the estimated maximum reimbursement, and so that's where it starts.
Thank you. Just a couple other, other general questions here. Have, have we shared these various proposals with other parts of the town, you know, outside of District One and Two that are directly affected by the Dwight School? Does anybody know?
Is that a question specific to?
Is the First Selectwoman here or anybody who might be able to-
She had to step out for just a moment, but she'll be back in just a moment.
Superintendent Testani, do you, do you know, have we had, have we-
There has certainly been, you know, a number of meetings that were public at which this item has been discussed throughout many, the past many months.
Right. So, so for people who are so inclined to dial in, which we all know unfortunately isn't a lot, but has there been like a, like a general town hall to, along the lines of what we did for like, say, when we had Penn Field and the options for Penn Field?
So the, my understanding, and I will certainly, if First Selectman Vitale is able to return, have her come and answer again, but the item has followed the normal process that any school project would follow.
Right. Right. So I'm just going to make a couple of comments here, and then I'll, I'll yield here. So I stand here tonight inclined to support this. And the, the reason being is that a lot of information has, has come at us very quickly over the last week or so, which leads me to believe that if, if we did continue to discuss this, we would probably end up at the same point. However, that being said, I don't like being rushed to make decisions regarding what in essence will be $100 million expenditures to, to the town. These are the types of things that, you know, we need to be given the information well in advance. And I know the final version of Svagall's report was issued on September 12th, which is fine. But this body was never really provided, and, and it is now only on the night that we're voting on it, that we're being given a presentation about the different options that, that, you know, were potentially available. And as I had mentioned last week, understanding the other options helps me inform my decision on whether to approve this option. And I said this last week, and I'm saying this again for the record here tonight, the RTM is not a rubber-stamp body. Just because the Board of Selectmen had a presentation on this and the Board of Finance had a presentation on this, doesn't mean that the RTM should have been not given a presentation earlier and not given this information well in advance. So we could all spend more time making sure we're absolutely comfortable with the decision that we're making. Like I said, I'm inclined to support this, but I feel like, you know, I have been pressured with a gun pointed at my head to, to make a decision on something of a magnitude like this that I generally like to spend a little bit more time on. Anyway, that's, that's my say, and I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Astorita. I have, on the list, I have Representative Kuhn online, Representative Rock, and Representative Pistilli. So Representative Kuhn, you're up.
Representative Kuhn, District Seven. I just wanted to respond to Representative Astorita's $100 million number, which first of all is the wrong way to look at an investment, but let's do it for just a moment. It comes down to about $76 per person per year over the 20 years. That seems to me not to be a very big expenditure. Yes, on face it is, but as, and as an investment in the town, which helps to drive the property values for everybody on this call, everybody in this room, that seems to be a pretty inexpensive investment for the kind of yields that we will get from it. Thank you.
Thank you. For a moment, I just want to go back. Representative Astorita, did you have any questions of First Selectman Vitale? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Representative Rock.
Hi, Dave Rock, District Two. I just want to, this has been historically one of these things that we all know has been in our town. It's been talked about and talked about and talked about over and over again. And we probably should have done this several years ago, eight years ago, 10 years ago. We've all known about the, this building. We all know that we love our children in town. And so it's the kick-the-can thing that, that I just, I have a real problem with. I have, I have a problem with it, not only with Dwight, but it just seems like everything we do in this town is debated over and over again, and it never gets done. And then the costs go up, and we all go, oh my goodness, it costs so much. And then we say, well, oh my God, I've got a gun to my head. Why are we, you're forcing me to make this decision? And it, and, and, and it gets kicked further and further and further. And I went, because I know that this is such a big expense, I went and I looked at the Board of Education, and I looked at the meetings, and I looked at Svagall, and I, and I, and I, then I went, I looked at the Board of Finance meeting, and I did my homework. And I, and I have all of the information, and I found the PDF online, and I made an informed decision. I will be voting yes, because that's the smartest thing to do here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Pistilli.
I wanted to build on what Representative Rock said. For those of us who have been serving for a while, Dwight's been mentioned more often than not, and we know that we're at a point where a reno just is not feasible, and it's not under the purview of our body to choose among the different scenarios. However, as members of the public, if we wanted to attend Board of Ed or Board of Finance meetings, there are opportunities for comment and certainly opportunities for us to write or advocate with the members of those bodies if there were something we disagreed to up until this point. The special meeting on this was September 3rd at Board of Ed. I have been following along. I do agree that the backup of this should have been included, and, you know, perhaps there, absolutely, there should have been a little more discussion last week. I'm very happy that you've come to provide this presentation. But with the information we've been given tonight, along with the information that we've already heard at BOE and BOF, and as a former Jennings parent who just can't wait for Jennings to be on the docket, yay Dwight, because Jennings is next, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the body? Representative Steele?
Jeff Steele, District Three. I just, I want to ask just a few questions because you weren't here last week, and if they were asked, forgive me, but I'm going to ask a couple of them again, just to make sure I understand. And when, when we talk about the questions I'm going to ask, they are to help me decide on this, obviously. And we talk about 1D, we talk about 1F as sort of the finalists in this whole thing. With the smallest, with Dwight really having the smallest population in town for an elementary school, was it not possible to do an occupied renovation? Is it, is it that everyone would have to be shipped out, in your opinion, having done this? Because we've had occupied renovations with, I think, Stratfield and Riverfield, Thought Burr. Is it not possible, other than McKinley, which was a, you know, a mold-related tear-down and rebuild, is there a way this could not have been an occup, or could not be an occupied renovation?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, and, and as you answer that, thank you. Is 1D completely unfeasible? Is 1D not possible, in your opinion, other than the cost, the potential costs to transport kids and to create destinations for them? So that's my two-faces, yeah.
Sure. So, so the first question was about, is it possible to do a renovation, like a renovation with the students in place? And the answer to that, in the terms of this high-level feasibility study, was no. Because when you look at the extent of renovation required, we're talking about taking this building down to the bones. We're removing the envelope, we're, we're removing almost everything that's not structure. And so that's very extensive. It's also very time-consuming. And so when you look at the amount of additional time that an occupied construction would add to a construction schedule, it becomes less and less feasible. And so for the purposes of this study, we did not include an option to, to keep the building occupied during a renovation. However, you know, with, in the next, you know, if a renovation was selected from this process, that could have been an additional study, although, you know, from the looks of it, it just did not appear that that would be feasible. It was adding too much extra costs, and there are hazardous materials in the building. So when, when there is demolition, it becomes a toxic environment. So it really is not recommended. And then the second question, remind me about, what was your second question?
I was just asking about, yeah, is that feasible and-
Oh, 1D.
The costs.
Right. So 1D, yeah, with, really with any of the renovations, you know, this building is 60 years old. It was intended to last about 50 years. So we've already pushed it past its limit. And when we invest this much, generally, when a municipality invests this much into a school building, we're looking for this to last at least another 50 years. And so you'd be asking the floor slabs and the foundations to go more than twice their planned life. And so when you're thinking about a renovation, you really have to take that into consideration. And since we know there are already existing issues with the slabs and foundations, that is an extremely weighty factor in this decision.
As a follow-up, so was the, was the cost essentially presented by, by your firm, or was the cost discussed and debated within the Board of Ed? So I, I just, I'm just curious how much within the Board of Ed, the renovation and the cost, potential cost of, of transporting students was debated? Was that debated? Jeff, maybe you're at my back, or?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, if there was one location to transport all the students to-
the students to, then I think we could have had a much more robust conversation. We're looking at transporting 230 kids to 10 different locations. How that would land, number one, I couldn't even tell you right now. It would be based on what classrooms had open space at what schools. I don't think the transportation company would have the capacity to be able to even do that. And then the emotional toll. I mean, we're talking about five to nine-year-olds. And siblings not being transported to the same school. I mean, logistically, I don't even know if it would be possible. So I think we need to take the financial cost out of it. We estimated for Svagal's, the 600-plus thousand a year for transportation, if we were going to transport all those children to one location. But as we, we already know, we, we don't have one location to transport them to. So it would be looking at scattering kids all over the district. Again, we are running real tight right now in transporting the students we have to the schools that they're zoned for, to try to break the zones and scatter them all over would be almost impossible. But then again, let's, I'm going to keep reiterating, the emotional toll it will have on students and families, I don't think we can put a price tag on.
Totally understand the emotional toll, but, but it wasn't really thoroughly looked at in terms of capacity at different schools. You just, there was an assumption that there probably wasn't, but.
So I did do a quick look at, and we would have kids, based on grade level, scattered all over. Two in first grade at this school, three at that school. I mean, it was logistically almost impossible to figure out.
Okay. The second question was the, the ECC. I know it was, it was brought up that two classes could have been brought there to still get the reimbursements. I looked at the map provided in, in your report, and I, I think we were talking about trying to create a, a nice, you know, geographic dispersion of, of ECC. Doesn't seem like anything's in the south part of the town. Doesn't this put five more in the northwest part of town without spreading out, which is, I thought, the goal, or one of the goals, which you talked about, Jeff? So now Mona Terrace is off, off the table. Are there other, I mean, doesn't this still keep everything in ECC uptown? So the two and three-year-olds get shipped up to Dwight as well as, if we were to ship out from Dwight during a rebuild?
That's the project before us. Mona Terrace has a lot of challenges being in the flood zone. So we wouldn't be able to put the money necessary to upgrade that facility long-term. It was discussed for a short-term resolution until Dwight, Jennings, one or the other got done. Dwight's going to get done sooner than, than Jennings, and then we'll have the opportunity and another crack at this, possibly with the Jennings project as well.
Okay, thanks. I've always been a supporter of education. Look back at my record. I think it's crucial, especially for real estate values, kids, everything else. 104 million is quite a bit. $29 million of interest. Reimbursements, probably close to being guaranteed, but not guaranteed. It, it's a lot of money that makes me think twice about this. The biggest project I've ever had to, to vote on. And, you know, this, this is important, obviously, for, for Dwight and the, the school system, but we have a, a town of taxpayers that have to foot this. So I really, I, I'm, I am torn on this. And in terms of, you know, the comment about gun to the head, and we all could have done our research, yeah, we can all do our research. We're, we're not the Board of Finance, and we're not, and I said this last week, we're not the Board of Education, we're not the Board of Finance, we're not, we're not the Board of Selectmen, we're not the Board of Education. We're a 40-person body with different people, with different schedules, and different abilities to go to all these meetings. I don't think necessarily, you know, in the, the US House of Congress, everyone attends the, the Senate hearings and vice versa. I mean, we can't be there for everything. So in this case, I feel that last week, or two, whenever we had this, the committee meeting, I think it was last week, it was presented to us like a fait accompli. Like, no, this is a done deal. This, these guys are going to prove it. They got the votes. What do we need to do? Let's just go answer some questions. And I looked at, I, I've never actually experienced that as a, as an RTM member in 16 years. I've never, like, not had something presented, especially at this, this price tag and this price level. It was shocking. We all looked at each other. This is crazy. So again, repeating from my committee meeting message, let's, you know, please keep us as part of this process instead of, oh yeah, that's right, the RTM, well, let's get them what they need last second, because this all was last second. In fact, I don't even, I still don't think this report is on our, on the website. It's not under the, the material. It's, we have it now because we were sent it, but it's not even up on the website, so.
Just interrupted. The town clerk actually did, I looked this afternoon, and the town clerk had posted it.
Okay.
On the website.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, I didn't think I saw it. But in any case, that is it, and thank you all for answering questions.
Thank you, Representative Steele. I have Representative Zesma, and then I saw Representative Walk.
Thank you, Liz Zesma, District 4. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to everybody who's worked so hard on this. This has been going on for years. This is the most important investment I will have ever voted on. It's not an expense, it's an investment, and it will last way longer than I will, which is why I can't wait to vote yes on this item. So I have a couple of questions, but let me just also say that I have, just like Representative Steele, I've been around 13 years, so you have a few years on me. I've seen workhands kicked down the road. I've seen more excuses. I didn't know what was in the materials. I didn't see it. I didn't have time. It didn't come to me the right way. We are looking at a capital project waterfall. Some items are literally double what they could have been and should have been. So to put this off any longer, and that, I was on the tour, that is not even to take into consideration what this school's needs are, it's just unconscionable. It is not fiscally responsible. I want to circle back on two items that came up earlier. One was the delta. So that delta really is made up of contingency escalation costs and soft costs, correct? And, and the scope of this project, I think that looks like a barely reasonable amount of money. Is there any scenario, and this was explained last week, by the way, is there any scenario under which those costs really exceed what would be reasonable expectations? And let me remind the body that if they do, it's another reimbursement.
Let me make sure I understand. So the below-the-line items here, you're talking about?
Right, so how you get from here to here.
Yep. And, and?
Is justified.
The ones you circled?
All, all of them.
Oh, yeah.
I think Representative Britton mentioned that that was, that, that delta seemed quite excessive. My question simply is, is it? But I think it's already been proven that it's not.
So at this stage, this early stage in, in concept development, you do see these higher numbers on contingency. And these are kind of industry-standard contingency numbers that are tested over time and over similar projects. And so we generally have a pretty good idea of what those numbers should be at this stage. As the project, project gets further into design, those costs move up into things that are more known and more predictable. So they shift, but they generally stay about the same. And the escalation, you know, is in there. That's accounting for, you know, the, the escalation that's expected over the next couple of years, kind of into that middle timeline of when we're expecting construction to happen. And so that's a relatively known number as well. So we're not, you know, just picking percentages. These are, are tested against industry knowns. Yeah.
Thank you. So, so they, you know, any, any overages in this area, of course, are reimbursed? Just, right, okay. So just like our, you know, our state reimbursement, we're looking at a significant amount of money that we could lose if we, if we hesitate on this. You know, and I've seen some bad, really bad votes in this town, like Millhill would be at the top of my list. The other question that came to you about whether or not, you know, how we could have possibly done a renovation with the children in place. So my understanding with legacy infrastructure like this is you're talking probably PCBs and asbestos. Does that make it almost impossible to do any kind of a renovation with students in that space? Okay, that was a great answer. All right. Well, I'm, I just want to say I think that not supporting this and not making this investment at this time is really a, a fiscally irresponsible thing to do. Again, thank you, and I support this and would encourage everyone to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Representative Walk next.
Jay Walk, District 5. Thank you, Madam Moderator. So I was on the tour also, along with Chris and a few other, a few other reps. So first of all, I just want to reiterate to what Representative Steele said about Stratfield School able to keep students in their school while they were doing renovations. So I was at all the meetings, and I can tell you that most of the work was done during the summer. The other thing was, they, they put a wing on Stratfield School. And they had two, if I'm not mistaken, I remember, trailers, four trailers, there you go, in the back of Stratfield School. So it was done. Only two families moved their children out to, I think Jennings, that was worried about their children's health. But I do want to say one thing that, to the other projects that we have done, and I've been on the Board of, of the RTM for a while, monies have been returned to the town. It's been under budget. So what makes you think that this project won't be under budget? And that we should, I, I, being on the tour, when I first saw the school, I, I right away said to myself, we need, we need to, we need to do something and, and build a new school. So anyway, I'm voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Representative Giordiatis.
Hi, Drew Giordiatis, District 9. I'm going to support this. I've lived here 35 years. My kids have gone through all the Fairfield Public Schools, lived through renovations, lived through PCB, you know, removal. But my point is, I have been, I was elected to this board in 2015. Yes, this is the most expensive project, but I think probably next year I'll be able to say the same thing, and the year after I'll probably be able to say the same thing. Things keep getting more and more expensive, and we just, that's just the way everything works. I will say, though, most, one of the most important things about me being on the RTM, and Jeff Steele could probably remember this, when I first joined, it was a Republican majority. So I have been on a Republican majority, I've been on a Democrat majority. But I, after close to 11 years, I keep my, very focused on what is the purview of an RTM member. If I wanted to do more, if I wanted to have more control, if I wanted to make different decisions, I would run for a different board. I have not run for a different board, and I try very hard to know my lane, stay in my lane, and do what I can to be the best RTM person for my district. I do extra things like sidewalks and stop signs, but that's not important. I know what my job is. I stick to my job, and I try to do the best I can. So I'm going to support this project. I, again, 11 years, Dwight, 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 it's time to get this building that's past its prime, obsolete, off the books here in Fairfield, and just, you know, move into the next phase. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, I, Representative Longo, wasn't sure who was there.
Melissa Longo, District 1. I just want to say thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you for answering all of our questions. While I echo some of our colleagues, it would have been helpful last week to have the full presentation. However, you know, being in this district that is directly affected, our families, especially in District 1, have spoken out in favor of this project very passionately. And a couple of years ago, I was in a meeting with many parents with a lot of questions about uncertainty, even three, four years ago. And so it is past time that this decision be made. I'm in full support for several reasons. I don't like, I didn't really like the price tag. I'll, I'll be honest with that. But, you know, after Superintendent Testani's information about the portables, I had no idea how much those cost, things like that just helps us to make a better, you know, feel better about the, the price tag at the end of the day. So thank you. That was extremely helpful. But also to, you know, to support, we're elected for a reason, to support our constituents. And we might not always agree with what's on the table. We might personally not want it or agree with things that have come across this body, but we're supposed to, are, we're elected to represent our constituents. And I think that especially District 1 being heavily affected by this, you know, rerouting kids, the families, as a mom of two, my oldest attended Dwight, there is no, there is no way I would feel comfortable with that as a mom. And I think that many parents can, you know, understand, no matter which school district you're in. And everybody would be affected by this. And I'm just happy that we can, you know, put this behind us finally. It's, it's been a long road coming. But I do appreciate everybody's input on this. And, you know, we do work very hard to make the best decisions for this town. And I think especially, you know, the questions that have been brought up are, are good ones. And that's how, that's how we make our decisions, is, is to get the most information that we can from what's being presented to us. So I think that's extremely important for us to do our job. So I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative McCleod.
Megan McCleod, District 2. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like to state for the record, I think this wire situation is a hazard. So I hope we can fix that in the future before it's a matter of time one of us busts a lip. I know we only have 10 minutes. I do have a couple of questions, but I will start by saying I've purposely waited to raise my hand. It's not, no surprise to anybody here, I had a lot of questions and a lot of comments at the last committee meeting. But I purposely waited, and I'm glad I did, because I think we generally have a good consensus here. I, I think the words like responsibility, kicking the can down the road, I, I take a little exception with some of those. I think we all acknowledge that Dwight issue has been around, but certainly the proposed solution has been changing like a, a moving dartboard many times. I think it was a year ago that we thought that the whole school was closing. So I think we need to be fair, and we need to be transparent. You know, every issue and every case has a way to get to this body by process and by merits. And there are certain things that will succeed by merits, but you can't even get to the merits of the issue unless we follow the process. I cannot emphasize enough how disappointed I am and what I think is really irresponsible in not being transparent with the study, with the presentation until tonight. It does feel, for lack of better words, like we were somewhat put against a wall, as if it was a rubber-stamped body. And I've, you know, I think all of us should take some exception to that concept. That being said, I think the whole concept of what is responsible for every one of our 40 members on this, on this panel, is that we do our part to represent our constituents. I'm District 2. This, this likely, especially with the conversations of potential redistricting, could impact my neighbors. And anybody in any of your seats are electing you to represent their issues. We can't possibly fulfill that duty unless we have access to the information. If we continue to move forward and not give the public access to the information, even through the avenue of asking questions of these individuals tonight, we're doing a disservice to our constituents. So I cannot emphasize that enough, which is why I do still have a couple of questions. We talked about the relocation cost. That was very helpful, the 600,000 per portable, because I think that puts a lot of numbers in perspective that we did not have in that report, which makes a lot more sense. So I'm going to skip over that question because now I get it. You know, 12 sections, you're talking $6 million perhaps in just relocation costs without the busing. That's a nightmare. But this concept of overcrowding, right, I don't remember who it was earlier on, asked the question, will we have an issue with overcrowding? Will you be coming to this board asking for money? And I really appreciate you Superintendent Testani being very upfront and transparent. Yes, we already have an incoming issue with overcrowding. What population data, what is our data source that kind of projects where we think we're going to be with the Dwight District numbers in the next five to 10 years and the district-wide for all the other districts? Where do we get that information from?
So we hire a consultant annually. The most recent 10-year projection was done back in January. This group of individuals has been working with the town for years in different capacity, whether it was Malone, McBroom, SLAM, and now M&amp;P. And they're demographers. This is what they do. They gather data. They anticipate enrollment based on the type of housing that's projected, that's been approved, the likelihood of families moving in, and so on and so forth.
So is it fair to say we, we are in a unique position in Fairfield where we had a large influx from COVID from? influx from COVID from the tri-state area? Have those housing assumptions been taken into consideration, given this most recent study? It's kind of a unique situation.
Yes, and I think there'll be other housing considerations as we see other things unfold in the future as well.
Thank you. My next question is regarding this Jennings, we've all talked about Jennings, I know, still you're very excited, I see your thumbs up. It was my understanding prior to this meeting, that actually Jennings was a priority before Dwight, and somehow Dwight jumped the priority list. Was there a specific event? First of all, is that true? Second of all, was there a specific event or occurrence that created that shift in priorities? And third, do we have a timeline of when to expect the proposal for Jennings?
There was no specific event. I do acknowledge that I think that Dwight is a more pressing issue, given the state of the building in comparison to Jennings, not that Jennings is, should be not discussed, but Dwight, I think, is a more pressing issue with air quality in that building, and some of the concerns that have been raised by the families since my arrival here three years ago, going on the fourth year. And we should expect that to come before this body in three years.
Thank you. Another thing I noticed that was missing from the report, or perhaps I missed it, because again, I had to read it pretty quickly, is the source of heating that we're proposing for this facility. Did we look at different options? What is the final recommended source of heating? Are we talking solar, are we talking radiant? Obviously, there's various differences in cost between all the different options. Where did we land on what the options were that were calculated?
Looked at two primary MEP options, one was a geothermal system, we're seeing that as a, and this is in the report. So, we did look at the costs for doing a geothermal system here at this building. Many municipalities are requesting that. At this time, the ROI is not proving to be incentive enough to go that route, based on the additional costs required. And so, the systems that are included in there are a higher efficiency gas-fired MEP system. And that's detailed in the report.
Thank you. What does MEP stand for, for those that don't?
Mechanical Electrola Engineering. So, the HVAC system, the mechanical system.
Thank you. Another thing I'm surprised has not come up tonight, because we did touch on it last week, and I kind of expected a little bit of information on this. We've all acknowledged this is going to impact particularly for the three years of construction, for sure, but also in the future, somewhat of a reduction of our field space use. I know I was personally surprised to hear that our Director of Parks and Recreation, whatever we call it now, Anthony Calabrese, was not consulted during this entire process. Have we now had any further conversations about what the proposed solutions will be, and will there be costs associated with that? I remember only a couple of months ago, at this body, a discussion had come up about exchanging field use with a surrounding town for use of our beaches, there was a lot of concern about that. What are we going to do about the field use loss as a result of this proposal? Because I understand that Dwight is the second largest field site for our recreation programs.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I believe Anthony Calabrese is online, and might be able to answer for you.
Anthony, you there?
I'm here. I don't have any answers for you, though.
So, Anthony, were you consulted about this prior to the Board of Finance meeting where it was proposed?
No, I was not.
Have you been consulted since then about proposed solutions moving forward, considering this is definitely imminent?
I would not say that I've been included in any discussions about proposed solutions, no.
Okay, do you have any ideas, if this were the first time you were being consulted, do you have any ideas of what you would suggest? And is this going to have a negative impact on the way we utilize our fields now?
It'll definitely have a negative impact. We're losing a full-size adult softball field that's used just about every day, and we're losing soccer fields up there. So, yeah, it'll have a negative impact. No, I don't have any idea at the moment where we'll relocate those leagues and sports.
Okay, so Superintendent Testani, do you have any ideas of concepts of things we should consider?
Not at the time. I'm happy to have conversations with Mr. Calabrese. And with all due respect, from a former adult softball player, played many years, I'm not all that concerned about relocating men's softball, to be honest with you.
Sorry.
As I said, I really appreciate your transparency. I certainly am not playing men's softball anytime soon either, so.
It's dying as well, if you look at it from the last 20 years.
Next time, I want to get a sports report from Superintendent Testani on the agenda.
More than happy to give it to him.
I appreciate it. That being said, you know, I, and my caucus knows this, I'm District 2, I am planning to vote yes for this. But on this panel and on this body, I really like when I feel good about my vote. I really like when I feel I've been presented with the information. I really like when I had the ability to answer constituent questions, which I certainly got, I know others in my caucus who represent similar districts did. I cannot stress enough that, to me, there's no question on the merits of this issue. Anybody who sees this as an expense is looking at it the wrong way, it is an investment. I do have to disagree with Representative Kuhn, that it's not the right way to look at an investment by incorporating the interest. I think you actually absolutely have to look at that, because if you don't know how you're going to pay for the whole nut, you're certainly going to have a hard time explaining why you come short on your payments in 20 years. That being said, I don't think anybody denies this is an important investment on behalf of our town. It's certainly an important investment that directly impacts my district. I just would have really appreciated a much more streamlined, transparent, bipartisan, and collaborative process in how we get here. I really hope we do better as an RTM body moving forward. I really think that is the right thing for this town to really consider how we're investing in our education. And I'm happy to see, at this point, we've been given that brief, I just wish it was much more in-depth, much more collaborative, and much more town-inclusive. So, again, I will be voting yes on behalf of what I think my constituents want and deserve. I just hope we do better moving forward in how we present it. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Elwinger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bob Elwinger, District 3. So, I first learned of the Dwight rebuild proposal when I attended the September 25th Board of Finance Capital Planning Workshop. And it appeared there, just one line item out of hundreds. Obviously, it showed a total of $74.6 million bonded over a three-year fiscal period. And at the time, that generated a lot of questions in my mind, to be honest, as well as it did for the Board of Finance, a lot of discussion at that meeting. So much so, that it was agreed that a special, an additional Board of Finance meeting would be rescheduled. So, in between, I reviewed the feasibility report. I attended that next special Board of Finance meeting, really appreciated the depth and the scrutiny and the analysis and the challenging questions that took place over that three, four, five hour, however long it took. And then, followed up by the regularly scheduled Board of Finance voting meeting on October 6. And so, I think the result is a well-balanced and carefully considered solution amid several alternatives, and reflects a great deal of input and collaboration. I'm really convinced that it is the most appropriate and fiscally responsible long-term solution for the town. The town is in a position, I think, an excellent financial position, in fact, given our existing debt service. And I acknowledge the fact that no one on the Board of Finance voted against this. We should move forward without delay, knowing that $15 million of state reimbursements are at risk. That $15 million will go a long way when applied towards the debt service. So, I fully support, and will vote to approve the bonding resolution.
Thank you. Representative Culburn.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Colin Culburn, District 8. I'm very glad that we are doing something about Dwight finally, and I am planning to vote yes on this item. I do have, I do have some questions, though, and a little bit of concern after the informational meeting last week, specifically around the plan, or maybe no plan, that we have to relocate should it needed to be done during the three-year period when we're going to build. Is that, did I understand that correctly, though, that that contingency is not built into the current 1F plan? Yes, okay. So, actually, taking a step back before I ask my other question about relocation, the next step in the process, assuming this is voted, if this is approved tonight, is, do we build, do we build a schematic design and then submit to the state? Or what does the process look like in terms of getting us to submit to the state the proposal?
In terms of the documents moving forward, you would go through a schematic design phase, and there'll be an estimate associated with that. And then, the next phase is design development, so it'll be a further development of the drawings and another estimate. And then, construction documents begin, and so that phase is producing the set that will go to the state for PCR review. Does that answer your question?
It does answer the question, thank you. And during that, do we have plans to build a relocation contingency plan during the design and schematic phases, phasing?
The strategy that we will, that we're beginning with, is a strategy of keeping the existing school functional during construction. This is, you know, it's obviously, it has challenges to it, but it's something that we're doing currently in Westport, it's something that we've done at other school districts with success. So, at this point, we don't foresee the need to offer a significant relocation plan as part of the study. If there's some unknown factor that comes up, then that would have to be reviewed at that time.
The reason I'm asking is because I did a little bit of research on this over the past week, and my understanding, and I'd love to get your, whomever is most appropriate to weigh in, is when we go and submit to the state a project like this, a contingency plan for relocation, if we feel that there is possibility of that having to happen, should be submitted during that time period, so that we have the ability to potentially get reimbursement for the costs associated with a relocation contingency. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Some relocation costs can be included in the reimbursement. Something that's going to happen during the design phases that I just mentioned, is that a construction manager will be brought on board, either as an advisor or as a construction manager involved in the, in the design phases. And they will be able to develop a phased construction plan to confirm and validate whether a relocation would be required. And so, that will be known in more detail prior to going to the state.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, it sounds like they would put together criteria that would trigger the potential need for relocation mid-project, is that correct?
If that came about, then that would be discovered before going to the state. At this time, we do not anticipate that a relocation is required.
So, here's my, and again, I am enthusiastically supporting this tonight. I do feel like there is significant risk here, because we're kind of, the one thing that's, the one thing that's kind of bothering me is we're talking out of both sides of our mouth about Dwight and its current state, and why, why we need to do this, which I believe we need to do this. But also saying, yes, we can keep the kids there during construction for three years, something doesn't feel right to me that we don't have a plan in place, should there be the need, which, in my opinion, and I'm not a construction expert, but man, just using common sense, it feels like we really should have a contingency plan in place for a school that we are effectively saying is at risk today.
I think what Marissa said, construction would actually be 18 to 24 months. But we've had projects, as was mentioned earlier, that kids stayed in buildings while swing space was made available. They are going to be in the building that is going to be 100% left intact until the project is completed. We have deemed that the children are safe in the building now. We did a study with Yale that came back in June. We've taken measures to make sure that air quality is sufficient in the building, so children are safe. So, unless we're going to disturb the walls of the current building, there should be no reason that they can't stay there throughout the construction.
Which I understand, and obviously, all well intentioned, but obviously, none of us can predict what the future holds. It does feel like it would be judicious to create a contingency plan here, that we can submit to the state as part of our, as part of our submission, so that we at least have all bases covered, we have a plan in place, because it doesn't sound like we have a ton of options to use anyways, and so, at least we're getting ahead of a potential very, very big issue. So, my, for the record, I would ask that, after approval of this, within 60 days, the CFO and the Board of Education, or whomever it would be, the Building Committee submits a contingency plan, or at least an early draft plan of what a relocation, what, A, what would trigger relocation in terms of criteria, and B, what that plan would be in terms of not only transportation, but also where, how, all of those, all those questions? Because I think, again, this is, I'm in favor of this, but this feels like one, one area that is a little bit risky to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the body? Representative Ludwigsak.
Thank you. Christine Ludwigsak, District 8. Apologies, one question I neglected to ask earlier. For the soft costs in the proposal, roughly $12.7 million, I believe the Board of Ed answered, had some questions asked, and they did, one of those questions was what the soft costs entailed. Environmental testing was one of those areas, along with like furniture and fixtures and equipment, and also a traffic study. There's maybe seven or eight other things in addition there. I guess my question maybe is for, so we are just clarifying, the environmental study or testing, environmental testing, just as we know, in the last six or seven years, can be very expensive and can, can add up quickly. So, just wondering, is that typical, that that's under soft costs, as opposed to having its own breakout, to have a better understanding of kind of, I guess, like where, where and how much that might cost?
So, that number, similar to some of the other contingency numbers, will become more clear and solid as we get further into the project. And at that point, it will move above the line. But so, what we have in there now is the hold based on industry standards and what we see in similar projects.
So, then that, along with like traffic studies or other areas, will not, like, soft cost is variable, and will be shifting as they move above the line? Is that right?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the body? All right, seeing none, I'd like to open it up for public comment. And so, I'd like people to please come up. Every member of the public has, it's a three-minute time limit, I'd ask for you to adhere to, and please, when you come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Dina Ryder, 400 Pinlock Road. I am the Dwight PTA Board of Ed rep. I have three boys in the Fairfield Public School System, a first grader, a third grader, and a sixth grader. And obviously, we're at Dwight. I'm here to speak to you tonight in support of approving the full budget for the building of our new school. As you're all well aware, this has been a topic of debate for many years, but unfortunately, the can has been kicked down the road. As a result of delay after delay, the school has reached a state of disrepair, and the cost has escalated. The time to act is now. The Board of Ed did extensive research and planning, and ultimately determined, for a multitude of reasons, that a school rebuild is the only way forward. A renovation, of course, has a more attractive price tag. But if you've been following along like we Dwight parents have, you'd understand that it's a foolish choice, and would have a severe catastrophic social-emotional impact on families. If you can imagine my first grader going to one school, my third grader going to another school, put yourself in my shoes, all the parent's shoes, it would be devastating. The Board of Finance agreed with this decision for a new build, and here we are today, the final hurdle that must be crossed in order to get the ball rolling. I watched your meeting on October 20th, and was disheartened to hear members saying they felt blindsided and unprepared. It has been public knowledge for nearly a year that the multi-site feasibility study was underway, and that ultimately, it was determined that a new Dwight with an ECC was what the town needed. Being a project that marks the largest capital expenditures this town has taken on, this project and study has been discussed in many news publications, shared widely in first selectman vitals newsletters, and on many public meeting agendas. The RTM voted on the formation of a Dwight Building Committee just last month, so I cannot understand how people are saying that they felt unprepared, or that information was being hidden from them. Going so far, describe it as deceptive and appalling. Fixating on the fact that a link to this report that you all knew was available felt like a political game, posturing and ego to me and many other Dwight parents. Regarding the ECC location, ECC sites need to be evenly distributed across town to maintain accessibility for all young students of Fairfield. They are currently all clustered together in the northeast corner of town. People in Greenfield Hill don't deserve to have a 90-minute bus ride just because they chose to buy houses there. You heard that right, 90 minutes each way from my three-year-old neighbor. His parents ultimately had to pull him out because of that. A three-year-old spending three hours on a bus each way, how is that right? Regarding athletic fields, I find it hard to believe this would be a true factor that takes precedent over the health and safety of a large cohort of students and staff. The fixation on the loss of two fields feels political and disingenuous. I'm hoping that those of you who toured Dwight last week realize that it's not a multimillion-dollar, state-of-the-art, massive athletic complex that's getting torn down. It's just a big patch of grass. The Dwight community has been extremely engaged in this whole process. We've read the reports, come to meetings, sent emails and advocated for what we want. I've seen the Spiegel's presentation four times now. Ever since the threat of closing our school down in 2022 arose, we've been on fire and I can assure you, we are well-educated and following every step of the way. We're down to the wire with an election and state application deadlines right around the corner. I urge you to not delay things any further and recognize how this investment is what's best for the entire town, not only Dwight students, staff and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Hi, Jeff Peterson, 133 Martin Avenue. I'm Chair of the Board of Ed. You've seen me up here. We've spoken a lot over the past couple of weeks. I really just want to say, it's been said before, like, people apologize to me after the October 20th meeting, we're being hard on you. Be hard on us. Ask us the questions. We want to be good partners with you in this. And I understand there's some frustration with the, with the, with the process, but I think that all of this has been very productive. I think everyone's gotten a lot of questions answered. I hope that, looking forward, everyone feels better about the direction that we're taking. I get that it's a big chunk of money, but I think that this is a project in the, in the years to come that we'll be proud to have put our weight behind and that will have a long-lasting impact on the educational stability and excellence of our, of our district. So again, any further questions, please keep them coming. We're always, we're, we're trying to be as open as possible. We understand this is complicated. We on the Board of Ed have lived and breathed this for years. I counted before I came here, I've been to 16 meetings in the past two months, largely related to this project. And I understand not everyone has the time for that. So we, everything is going to be done in public. The Chair of the Dwight Building Committee is here. Those will be public meetings. So continue along, follow, follow along. Everyone really, I think, should feel very good about the direction that we're going. And maybe have more questions as we go forward, and we can work on them together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. I'm also a member of our Board of Education. I serve as our secretary. I want to kind of piggyback on our Chair's commentary. I did hear the word "public" used a few times tonight that I thought was a little inconsistent. One of the things I think I myself, as a board member, and I think the rest of our entire body really pride ourselves on is our interaction with our public. During COVID, we were one of the first boards up and running under now First Selectment's leadership. And at every one of our meetings, we afford two opportunities for public comment, along with any voting item. So to hear statements like that this wasn't in the public, just for me as a board member, I find disappointing. I find that we really try and share that message. We want to hear from the public. We especially want to hear from other town bodies. I made the point also of attending other Board of Finance meetings to support this project. And I would encourage RTM members to please come to our meetings. I know they're long. I know we do them often. Just for this project alone, I think we had four additional meetings in just September. We got the report on September 12th. It was a lot of reading over a weekend with kids. I get it. So I would encourage RTM members to interact with our board and interact with all boards. You know, the capital planning meeting is a good one. I've been attending it, I think it was my ninth year. It's a great one. It gives you a really encompassed look at what this is. And I will say, Mark McDermott is sitting right here. He was chairing one of the town halls. I think I was the only attendee that year. And my one question of, I was the only attendee. And I got three questions, I think. You were very nice to me that night. My one question to Mr. DeWitt, who I think was there, was when can we get tri-board meetings? Because I think it would really benefit this town to see our boards meeting on a more regular basis. So I try genuinely, as an elected official, not to question people's intent and take what I hear and move forward with it. So I would encourage you all to come to our meetings. They're great. Hopefully, see you guys soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Greg Bosch. I live at 470 Jackman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to voice my strong support for the proposed bond resolution to replace Timothy Dwight Elementary School and create a purpose-built early childhood center on its campus. My wife and I have lived in Fairfield for nearly 15 years. Our children attend Stratfield and Tomlinson. They will never attend this elementary school. But I'm here tonight because what happens at Dwight affects every family in Fairfield. Strong schools benefit the entire district. They lift property values and strengthen Fairfield as a whole. I want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone that helped bring this project to a vote tonight. And this begins with the Board of Education's Facility Committee. For their bipartisan leadership, persistence and countless hours of thoughtful planning, you've balanced district-wide needs with fiscal responsibility and created a plan that reflects both vision and accountability for Fairfield's future. Thank you to the Board of Education as a whole as well, which voted for this project without opposition. Thank you to our state representatives, who fought to increase school construction reimbursement and bring Fairfield's tax dollars back home. Because of your work in Hartford, this project is both financially responsible and an investment in our children. Thank you to Fairfield's PTA Council and to the many parents across town who have supported this effort, even though, like me, their children will never attend Dwight. That kind of district-wide solidarity says so much about Fairfield. I know many members of this board also bought the Save One School to save all schools sign and T-shirt. Now, excuse me, just two years ago, the town was talking about, was considering closing Dwight. Now, the plan is to rebuild it and include dedicated space for our special education students as well. That's real progress. Strong schools strengthen neighborhoods, lift property values and reflect the pride we share in our public schools and Fairfield itself. This project is not just about replacing an old building. It's about health, safety and opportunity, including for our youngest learners, our preschoolers and our special education students. It's about giving our teachers a building worthy of the work they do every day. I hope all RTM members will join the Boards of Education, Selectmen and Finance, who each voted without opposition to move this project forward. Please vote yes tonight on the Dwight project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bosch.
Good evening, everyone. David Krasnov, 155 Burr Street. I'm also a member of the Board of Ed. I want to start off by thanking my Board of Ed members before because I echo almost everything they say. And actually, Mr. Bosch, thank you for those kind words. Appreciate it. So to elaborate on what Mr. Bosch was saying, we spent countless hours in our facilities meetings going over a lot of the questions that were asked tonight. And they were good questions. We had the same questions at our meetings. But if you want to go back and watch them, we answered almost every single one of them. I know you don't have time to watch every meeting, but, but we did. We spent hours and hours, over 20 meetings, reviewing stuff like relocation of students on the new build. We actually had two companies, not just Fagals, Silver Petricelli about a year and change ago was in as well. And they said that was a way that we can keep students in the building and do a new build. Their concept was a little different, but still kept kids in the building. In terms of relocation scenarios, we spent over five meetings looking at all different relocation scenarios with the superintendent and other board members. Every single one of these meetings is bipartisan, and we try to do what's best for the students. So I just wanted to clarify all that. I'm glad. It sounds like everyone's finally going to support Dwight. My kids do go to Dwight. I used to go to Riverfield. And when I went from Riverfield to Dwight and I saw the difference of the school and the inequality within our district, I was completely shocked. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Jen Jacobson. I will be brief. I would concur with all the comments that have been stated before me, and I thank you for your attendance here tonight. I just want to say that, again, I can't believe it was two years ago that we were talking about either closing Jennings or Dwight. And in two years' time, our board and administration have intensely focused on the needs of this district in great collaboration with our administrators and building leaders who sat with us and told us what their schools now need 10 years later after our long-range plan had been done. Tonight is such an exciting opportunity. And I know we're focused on numbers and ECC and Dwight. But for the first time, realize that you are voting on actually building space for our in-district special education programs. No building has ever been built with an ed spec for our special ed kids. Understand tonight that you vote for the first early childhood care program in this district to be part of an elementary school that has never been done before tonight. We have moved these programs to serve the device nerds of our school, our students, into buildings that they weren't built for. We've taken the time to work with consultants and other people to update our ed spec, to not only modernize them. It's not, you know, the Jetsons, but they, we have modernized that ed spec. But I just want to say that there's more tonight than the numbers and the names of these buildings, but that we are moving our district forward. And I hope with your support, your continued, that you will vote yes for this for education in Fairfield as a general going forward. And tonight with Dwight, that's where this vote stands. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I appreciate the frustration. There's been a lot of frustration in this area, but we are here tonight and we've done a lot of work to get here. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Efrin, 241 Burr Street. I'm a former PTA president at Dwight for the past two years. Also Board of Ed rep at RLS and PTAC President-elect. And I'm the Chair of the Dwight Building Committee. I'm really excited to get this going. I don't know how I can follow Ms. Jacobson. It is really exciting, and it's been a long road. When I think back to 2022, standing at the gazebo with my youngest, who wasn't even a student there yet. She's now in, in first grade, sorry, second grade. Oh, my gosh. And I've had, I have two older daughters who have both graduated out. But she was holding a sign that said, "I love my school." And that's, to me, where it all kind of started to really kick in. Like, we just moved here in 2020. They were thinking about shutting us down. And she could not wait to go. The next year, I started my presidency. She started kindergarten. The first week of school, it was shut down three days out of five because it was so hot that they could not stay open. Over 90 degrees in those classrooms. Can you imagine little kindergartners coming in, sitting down, trying to focus, being so excited to be there, and an hour later, being put right back on the buses to be sent home? It was devastating for her. It was devastating for me. So immediately, I got to work on air conditioning. And I bothered Mr. Angeles Papa George, who's sitting there in the audience, and I asked him, "What could we do about this situation? How is it that we only had two barely functioning split units in that building for all those students?" I just want to thank everyone here in the RTM for taking the time, for really wanting to be educated about this decision. I understand it is a lot of money, but it is, it's been a long time, right? And it's added up. Sorry, is that my time? It's your bedtime? I'm sorry to keep you up late. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for wanting to be educated. I understand that. But it has been in the public sphere. No one operates in a vacuum in this town. It's been talked about. I heard it on Stormin' Norman last Wednesday as I was driving my middle schooler, you know, home. And he, they were talking about the fields. Oh, my gosh, the fields. I'm not, I don't want to go off on a tangent, but that really does upset me, that we're talking about an adult softball league versus students in this town who need to have a place to be educated, right? The health and safety and well-being of our students versus an adult softball league. Really? Really? Okay. Because I'm not going to have another opportunity to do this publicly, I want to thank my mentor, Jen Jacobson, who has been unwavering in her support of this project. I don't know where I would be without your guidance. Thank you so much for helping me see that it was more than just about Dwight. It was about all the other schools in town. Katie Flynn, David Krasnov, who I used to sit in the audience with. We would sit there and shake our heads in anger and disgust while we were watching Board of Ed meetings. We could not understand what was happening. Carol Guernsey also, very supportive throughout all of this. First Selectment, Christine Vitali. You have helped everyone in this town realize that the ECC is part of our Fairfield Public Schools. It's not an afterthought. They are our first, our earliest learners. They deserve to have a safe space to be educated in. And they don't deserve 90-minute bus rides. I also want to thank Lori Charlton for early on-
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I am going to ask you-
You do want me to wrap up? Mr. Testani, thank you for listening. Jeff Peterson, I know you weren't always on board, but my goodness, what a good turnaround. And I'm really proud at how the legacy that you are leaving after eight years of service is going to be one of the most lasting and enduring impacts this, this town has ever seen. Hopefully, a, a school that will last for a lot longer than us. And last, I want to thank Mimi, our principal, Tara Hyder, and my family for all the missed bedtimes, reheated leftovers and late nights. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Efrin. Thank you. Any other members of the public? Okay. Anybody online? Don't think so. Okay. Seeing no more, waiting for public comment. We'll come back to the body. Representative Shea.
Chris Shea, District 2. This has been a great meeting for me. I've learned a lot. And much to the surprise of many of you, I have changed my mind because of what I've heard, because I'm able to listen and learn. I do have serious safety concerns about the proposal. And I am wanting to just mention that I, I think it's going to be a big challenge to keep that building occupied with this major project being undertaken. However, I'll leave that to the engineers and the construction manager to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the body? Anyone online? Seeing no more comments, we'll vote. We'll go ahead and ask our clerk to just do a roll call vote.
Anna Starita. Melissa Longo. Karen Cook Lippman.
Yes.
Megan McCloth. Dave Rock. Chris Shea. Bob Elwanger. Mike Hardigan. Jeff Steele. Jen Hawuth. Laura Carson. Michelle McCabe. Liz Esma. Kristen O'Neill. Sharon Pastilli. Jay Walk. Rob Blanchard. Nancy Donnie. Eric Juniak. Alex Ocampo.
Yes.
Steve Barrettts. Lori Geldenzi. John Kuhn.
Yes.
Scott Nickel. Lenny Brayman.
Yes.
Chris Carroll. Colin Colburn. Christine Ludwizak. Drew Georgjatus. Lisa Havy. Mark McDermott. Karen Whackerman. Margaret Horton. Yes. Pieratsky.
Unanimous. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations to not just the Dwight community, but really the town of Fairfield on this important vote. RTM members, don't go anywhere, we're not done. We have item number nine. This is to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Finance. Resolved that the bond resolution entitled "A Resolution Appropriating $3,713,704 for the Cost of the Security Entrance Vestibule Improvements Project at Various Schools and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." Is there a motion to approve? Representative Pistilli, seconded by Representative Rock. Before we begin general discussion, I'll entertain the motion for an amendment for this item as well. Representative Whackerman. Oh, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Marissa for her time this evening. Thank you.
Karen Whackerman, District Nine. I'd like to make an amendment to add at the end, "B and hereby is approved."
Do I have a second? Representative Pistilli. So the motion on the table is to add "B and hereby is approved" to this item. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, that motion carries, so we'll go back to the amended motion. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that motion carries. Okay. Item number 15, "To Consider and Act Upon Any Other Matters Presented to Said Meeting in Which May Be Properly Acted Upon Under the Rules of the Representative Town Meeting." Is there any discussion? All right, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, before I entertain that motion, I just want to thank every member of the body. This is our last meeting of the term, so I want to thank every member of the body for their service over the past term, that includes our former moderator and now new Selectmen Spolier. I know that this volunteer job we all do can at times feel like a lot. I think that everyone here should be commended for the commitment that you all make to the service to the town in this form. I'd like to particularly recognize the members who are not running for reelection next term. They are Dave Rock, Bob Elwanger, Kristen O'Neill, Nancy Donnie, Alex Ocampo, and Mark McDermott. So I'd also like to take a moment and thank our town clerk, Betsy Brown, for all she does behind the scenes to help the RTM. Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Representative Carson, seconded by Representative Blanchard. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.